Hi, everyone. Welcome. Before I officially call the meeting to order, I just wanted to say, first of all, welcome to everyone who's joining us here, especially for a summer special meeting. We have two resolutions right off the bat, both of them very special, so I am going to jump into it so we can get to those. I imagine some folks here are also here for a 6:45 public hearing. If we aren't done honoring our people with the resolutions, we'll just push that back a little bit so that anyone, if you are here for celebrating the individuals we're celebrating tonight, will take a recess following that, so that you're welcome to stay with us longer, but you're also welcome to go at that point. And then, councilors, after our public hearing, we'll move on to some of our regular business that we're going to take care of. So, thank you. Kim is ready in the booth for Bev Kim. Thank you very much. So with that, I will call to order this special city council meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, August 15th, 2022, 6:30 p.m. Ms. Dixon, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Forgot to put one of the sheets by us.
You could just go down this way.
Counselor St. Hilaire.
Here.
Counselor Feldman.
Here.
Counselor Flowers.
I'm here.
Counselor Bowen.
Here.
Counselor Rand.
Here.
Counselor Rotundo.
Yeah.
And then we have Counselor Crowley and Hausmann and Sweeney not here yet.
Yes, and some of them are in transit right now. Thank you very much. And it should be noted, a special thank you to Ms. Dixon, our Assistant City Clerk, who is filling in for Ms. Kent, our City Clerk while she is recovering from some back surgery. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Counselor St. Hilaire, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
What are we to pledge, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you very much, Counselor St. Hilaire. With that, let's go right to our resolutions. And for our first one, Counselor Rotundo, I'm going to invite you to go to the podium. This is honoring our Seniors of the Year, and although we did find out who these folks were at Senior Day in the Park, this is our chance to honor Ruth Ann and Rowley officially here. Thank you for being with us, and they are Ward One residents, so it seems very fitting, Counselor Rotundo, that you read this for them.
It is. It's actually an honor, and I've known them for many years, so I'm actually honored to do this. And I also want to thank you, Madam President, for authoring this resolution. Resolution in honor of Beverly, 2022, Senior of the Year, whereas Roland Rowley and Ruth Ann Brewer, residents of 19 Sylvester Avenue, Beverly, have been selected as Beverly Council on Aging Seniors of the Year for 2022. Whereas one Mike Carr, Rowley, and Ruth Ann, a volunteer power couple in our community, as they have devoted countless hours of their time and service to others. Whereas both Ruth Ann and Rowley enjoyed long careers, with Ruth Ann dedicated to her work as the produce manager of local area stop and shop stores, and Rowley dedicated to his career of 28 years at Silvania in Danvers, Massachusetts. Whereas the Brewers can always be found involved in the community in a wide variety of ways, from organizing the senior center's first ever traveling botchi team, to organizing lobby and for and planning for a new botchi court to be built at Livingstone Park, to serving as dedicated and faithful volunteers at the Beverly Senior Center itself, who always arrive early for their shifts and whose bright and cheerful attitudes are part of what help ensures that those using the senior center have a positive experience that the senior center itself continues to flourish. Whereas the Brewers are also extremely active volunteers in the neighborhood and civic association, giving of their time to assist Rioside Civic Association Fourth of July Celebration and with the annual Easter egg hunt at O Bear Park. Whereas Ruth and Rowley are integral volunteers for Operation Troop Support in Danvers, as well as assisting with and giving their time to support the Salem Department of Children and Families' Annual Christmas Party for foster children. Whereas Ruth Ann and Rowley are also passionate advocates for older adults living in the Beverly community, to whom city leaders can turn to, gain insight, and learn more about the experiences and needs of older adults in the city. Whereas the Brewers love not only time with their community, but also time with their family. Rowley, who was born on the Fourth of July, was aptly described by his son, Mac, as having a firecracker personality, while Ruth Ann's son, Tim, describes her in a way that is well matched for such a firecracker, saying she is someone full of vibrant energy and determination. Whereas the Brewers find joy in fishing, especially Rowley, spending time with their grandchildren, helping others, and whereas Ruth Ann and Rowley truly exhibit the community pride and caring, the sense of leadership, enjoying sharing kindness and giving of themselves and service to others embodies the true volunteerism and generosity of spirit. Now therefore it be resolved that the Beverly City Council does hereby congratulate, thank, and honor Beverly's 2022 Senior of the Year, Roland and Ruth Ann Brewer, and wishes them much happiness, success, and good health, in orders that the City Clerk spread a copy of this resolution upon the city records.
Thank you very much, Counselor Rotundo. And it looked like, Counselor Rotundo, did you invite the Brewers to speak?
I did, and they chose not to.
I can respect that. Thank you both very much, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you.
For our next... Oh. Yes, thank you, Ms. Dixon. Thank you very much. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve, that was Order 190, the resolution celebrating Ruth Ann and Rowley Brewer.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The motion carries 6-0. And thank you for keeping me on track, Ms. Dixon. That brings us to our next resolution for the evening. This is Order Number 207. And Counselor Rotundo, would you like to join me at the podium for this one?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. So, we really wanted to have Joe in front of us. We had very short notice that Joe was leaving the city and relocating to Florida. We want to thank him for his 47 and a half years of service to the City of Beverly, the service to the U.S. Navy, then as a Beverly police officer, and then the years of walking the high school floors and the many kids that he interacted with over the years. It's a very special day for him, and so we wanted to honor him. The one story I want to tell about Joe is, and everyone knows, as soon as you walk up to him, you get a lifesaver. So I gave him a hard time when we were coming up here, because last Sunday, in Lynch Park, I'm pulling in for the fireworks, and of course, I pull up, I put my hand out, I get my lifesaver. I popped a filling out because of it. So I didn't bring a bag of lifesavers, and I noticed about 10 people have bought him bags of lifesavers. So everyone knows Joe and his lifesavers, and he's an honor. I'm glad he was here when I got here, stayed around, kept working. Guy was unbelievable. It's 100 degrees out, Joe's out there working details still. Amazing man. I hope when I'm his age, and I'm not going to say it, I'm as in good shape as you are, and we're very grateful for your service and that we wish you the best. Cap, do you have anything you want to?
So yes, Officer D'Angelo, if you'd stay up here with us. We're going to keep you here at the podium. Counselor Rotundo, would you like to join me in reading the resolution?
I would love to.
So this is a resolution in honor of Officer Joseph D'Angelo, upon the occasion of his retirement, presented by the Beverly City Council with great appreciation for the dedication, community engagement, and generosity of spirit of our esteemed honoree.
Whereas Beverly police officer and city employee Joseph D'Angelo is retiring following combined 47 and a half years of dedicated service to the City of Beverly through his various capacity of employment.
Whereas Officer D'Angelo is a lifelong resident of Beverly, having been born at Beverly Hospital in 1947, and then choosing to make Beverly his home through his adult years.
Whereas Officer D'Angelo is an alumnus of our excellent Beverly Public Schools, graduating from Beverly High School in 1964, with the distinction of being class president, not to mention the distinction of being the youngest in his class.
Whereas Officer D'Angelo served our country and the United States Navy from 1966 until 1970.
Whereas he then went on to graduate from Salem State College as part of the class of 1974, having earned his bachelor's in education degree.
Whereas, following his Salem State graduation, Officer D'Angelo went on to serve the City of Beverly, and particularly its young people, as the Youth Services Director for the city from 1975 until 1980.
Whereas Officer D'Angelo then served as a full-time police officer from 1980 until 2003, following which time he served as a Beverly Police Department Special Officer from 2003 until 2022, as well as a Beverly High School Security and Hall monitor from 2003 until 2022.
Whereas Officer D'Angelo also served on the Beverly Municipal Federal Credit Union Board of Directors for over 20 years, as well as serving on the Beverly Police Officers' Executive Board for 23 years.
Whereas Officer D'Angelo brought his community-mindedness and dedication to the people of this city to all that he did, including but not limited to assisting in the organization and development of such community safety programs as the Beverly Police Bicycle Rodeo, the Maq Car Crash to help educate and keep safe graduating seniors, and prom attending students at Beverly High School, and the Up All Night Post-Graduation Event to help keep young people safe while also allowing them to joyfully celebrate their high school graduation with peers.
Whereas Officer Joseph D'Angelo is known for his kindness, his encouraging words to help support and uplift others, as well as his dedication to and love for his community and its people, and has been an important part of making Beverly the community it is today.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Beverly City Council does hereby congratulate, thank, and honor Officer Joseph D'Angelo upon the occasion of his retirement, and wishes him much happiness, success, and good health in these next steps of his journey, and orders that the City Clerk spread a copy of this resolution upon the city records.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words to all your fans?
Very nice. Thank you very much. I'm overwhelmed. It's unbelievable. It's been a great run from 1970 on, I guess. I also worked at Alcorn's Clothing Store for 23 years. So, I just want to thank everybody that gave me the opportunity to work, and it was great. I had a wonderful time, made a lot of friends. Thank you very much.
It was a life-saving.
I bought my way to friendship. Thank you again for coming. I really appreciate it, everybody. Thank you. I was worried that I didn't bring enough mints, but I'm all set now.
And Officer D'Angelo, we read off of this copy, but we do have the official signed copy here for you that we'd like to give to you. Thank you so much for your service.
Floyd?
It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
I was worried that I didn't bring enough mints, but I'm all set now.
And Officer D'Angelo, we read off of this copy, but we do have the official signed copy here for you that we'd like to give to you. Thank you so much for your service.
Floyd?
It's a pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I do want to say a word of thanks, Captain Devlin, helping to make sure that we had great information that we could honor and celebrate Officer D'Angelo with. Thank you very much, Captain. And I did get, Officer D'Angelo, I got one more. I got an email today after people knew that you were being honored tonight, and I just wanted to share one other story that came to me that just mentioned an example of your generosity. There was a student who could not afford to go to prom, and so the school was able to assist with the ticket, but it was mentioned to Joe that the student didn't have the money to buy a dress, and so the next day, he had a check from the Beverly Rotary so that that student could have everything that she needed to go to prom. So, Joe, what an example of the kind of generosity of spirit. So I wanted to make sure that story got shared as well. So I would entertain a motion then to approve Order 207. This is our resolution celebrating Officer D'Angelo.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0. Thank you very much. I am going to take a recess, well, a motion for recess, so we can let folks who would like to go, go, but it is 6:45, so what I'd like to do is call to order our posted 6:45 public hearing on Order 189. This is the Community Preservation Committee Out-of-Cycle Application for $400,000 for Brisco Village for Living in the Arts. And then, councilors, I would like to entertain a motion to take just a five-minute recess before we reopen this hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries 8-0, so we're going to recess this hearing, and we will be back at 6:50. And with that, we're in recess, and so, no, we're not. I don't know. I'll take a motion for a five-minute recess.
So moved.
All those.
Second.
Aye.
Now we're... I thought it. I know, I also was... I know, I was like, wait, it was just the hearing, but not the meeting. Thank you, because I was...
Left off with the posted public hearing on Order 189, which we just recessed to 6:50, and it is now 6:50. So with that, I will reopen the public hearing on Order 189. And this public hearing is actually one that I need to recuse myself from. Yes, thank you, Ms. Dixon.
You're welcome. Ordered that, so this is number 2022189, the legal notice ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, August 15th, 2022 at 6:45 PM, 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor, Council Chambers, Beverly, Massachusetts, relative to a recommendation for an out-of-cycle application request for additional CPA funds for Beverly Village for Living and the Arts, 7 Sawyer Road. And this was published Monday, August 8th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dixon. So I'm going to recuse myself from this, given the connection of my day job to organizations working on the project. So with that, Vice President Rattendo, I'm going to ask you to take the chair and run the public hearing, and I will return when you refer to committee.
This public hearing, 6:50, is called to order. So there's a sign-up sheet at the podium up front if anyone from the audience would like to sign to speak.
I'll go grab it, just in case.
CPC, would you like to say anything?
Only that CPC supports this project. I think it's going to be a wonderful project for the city.
Can you, can you re-say that? I'm sorry. So Ms. Richter, could you go up to the podium and repeat all that for us again so that BevCam can catch it? My apologies. If you are to speak, have you speak at the podium.
Only to say that I'm only here to answer any questions anybody might have, but I would like to say that CPC fully supports this project, and we think it's going to be a great addition to the city.
Thank you, Ms. Richter. Mr. Ailes, do you have anything that you would like to add to this?
I don't have any specific questions.
Then I will ask Harborlight, Mr. DeFranza, do you have anything you would like to add to this project, some insight that might help? I see you don't have your little booty on.
I don't, I don't, actually.
That's very nice.
For those of you who are curious, this is my first post-leg break public meeting without a cast on. So, side comment, they don't make them like Joe DiAngelo anymore. So that was a, it was a nice accident to be here. It was not noted in the resolution, but former Harborlight employee, felt like that should be added, but we love Joe. So, yes, thank you to the CPC and to the city for considering the additional request. I think, as maybe some folks know, there is a bit of a challenge out there in the market on the construction cost side. It's pretty dramatic. All of the affordable housing efforts in the state are undergoing similar processes. We have closed a project recently on Cape Am that had similar challenges and a similar approach, which is that the state is coming in with substantial additional dollars, but they want to see the municipalities do the same. And so that's why we came and asked the CPC out of round, which was very kind of them to hear, for some additional funds, so that we were able to leverage additional funds from the state. And those state funds was about, were about $3 million is how that, the leverage works. So very similar to how a normal capital stack works, but because this was an extension based on cost, the state wanted everybody to go back again and do the same thing again, which is what brings us here this evening. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and everybody on the council.
Thank you, Mr. DeFranza. Anyone from the City Council, any of the councilists have questions? Counselor St. Helier?
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. DeFranza, a quick question, just clarifying the amount. On the agenda that I got, it says 400,000, and then on the information, it says 500. Is it 500?
Well, we asked, we asked for five, and there was a pretty good debate about it, and the, the vote that the CPC took was for four.
Okay. And the original amount awarded was 700?
Correct.
So this would bring the total to 1.1 million?
That's correct.
And for Mr. Ailes, this is coming out of the CPC fund dedicated to housing? And what would that balance be remaining? General?
Yes, Counselor St. Helier, it's coming from the general CPC reserve.
What would the remaining balance be?
After these funds, if approved, are distributed, there would be a total left in the fund of 656,000 amongst the various categories. And that does not include the FY23 budget, which will be likely coming before you, once it clears through the CPC for FY23 spending, which will be in the range of probably around 1.2 million additional to spend before June 30th, if, if they so desire.
One question, if I may?
Absolutely.
And just, are there any other, I guess, projects earmarked for the remaining fund, or?
So, that might be a question better for Ms. Richter, because they-
I guess, does this impact any other pending projects?
No.
Okay, thank you.
There are no projects in the pipeline yet.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Rattendo?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. DeFranza. And also, I guess, just first, I support further funding this project. I think it's a good one, and I have no problem with it. But I am curious, it seems like you still have a gap to make up, and I'm wondering if you could share with us where that will come from.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good question. And so the, there's about four or five different pieces that made up the, the gap closing, as it were. And as I mentioned, we're, this is pretty common now around the pipeline for the Department of Housing at the state level. We closed one in Rockport, we're in the middle of this one, and then we have another one in Wenham, where we're doing the same, the same exercise. So in this case, there were about five or six different sources of funds that closed the gap. The dominant one was that we renegotiated some of the ways that the loan income housing tax credit pricing was coming in from the investor, and made some changes to that structure, and that yielded about $3.5 million. Some of that is, as the project gets larger, there's a natural increase in what's known as basis, which allows you to draw more funds, so it's a little circular in that way, but that's $3.5 million. The big one was that the state came in with 300, three, sorry, $3 million. My way of understanding is this was the first project in the state to figure out how to navigate federal ARPA funds into affordable housing projects, which now DHCD has codified that process. That was significantly more challenging than I think folks expected structurally. So that was 3 million. Additional state historic tax credits, a little over a million, 1.2. There's, we left Beacon and Harborlight left some money in the deal, another 630,000 or so, and then the 400,000 that we requested from the CPC. So the CPC funds, as is often the case, the local funds, the majority purpose of it is as leverage for the rest of the, for the rest of the stack.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one follow-up question. Thank you, Vice President Rattendo. Let's see, I guess my next question is really more about how, will this allow you to really pick up the pace on the project?
Yeah, it allows, so the, the state essentially took the CPC vote as the sign that it needed, so the pace picked up a few weeks ago, actually. And so they, once the state schedules an attorney and allows you to start doing what's known as a weekly closing call, you know you're on, you're getting to the exit. That still is about a six-month process, but we have every confidence that it's going to, that the financial transaction will close this fall, and then the work will, the work will be able to proceed. So the project is stable, the structure is stable, and it's moving forward.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm glad that we're, I'm glad that I'm personally able to participate in moving that project forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rand. Any other councilists? Counselor Bone?
Thank you. I would echo Counselor Rand in saying, I, I think this is a great project, and happy that there has been some creative thinking about how to make it happen. And I know it's a project that's been vetted many times over, both in how it was designed and the permitting to make that happen, and then the financing. So the, the only additional questions I had were, well, one, one very small one, about the title of the project. I've seen the Beverly, Briscoe, or Beacon Village, and so was wondering which one we should stick to and publicize. So that, but that's, that's a small one. But the, the bigger question is just around sort of explaining that cost escalation a little bit more, because I think the original proposal that went to the CPC was in the low 40 million range. The, the latest figure is the 53. The size of the gap was a little flexible, because that's how this financing works.
That works, right.
So just curious about sort of the, the drivers of that. You know, we all know supply chains and materials and, and salaries, but maybe you could just give a little bit more of, of the picture, and where you see this falling at the end of the day, which is, you know, given that the timeline is not, this happens immediately, are you building in some further cushion, or is this potentially coming back again for more?
Right. So it's three questions, I think.
Yes, at least.
So I think you want to stick with Beverly Village for Living in the Arts, as opposed to Briscoe. Briscoe will be, of course, always in concrete on the top of the building, but I think for nuances and a variety of reasons, making the, the shift, there was a lot of dialogue about that. But that's, that's where it has landed, so I think that's safe at the moment. Cost escalation, two, two of those. So your third question, I think I'll wrap in, which is there's, there's contingency here for ongoing escalation, though it appears that that's, you know, perhaps not going to be needed, but it is built into the deal, and we're building it into all of our deals for this next few months, because it's excessively turbulent. So there is, there is no comeback expectation or opportunity. And certainly, with my Beverly hat on, I would say that's not, that's not something we should do or expect, so I think you should count on that. The third thing, I think, by way of costs beyond supply chain and labor, both of which have been dramatically difficult of late, is actually interest rates. So there was a huge amount of loss of capital based on interest rate fluctuation, particularly on the construction loan interest side. That was actually larger than the, than the construction side, so that was almost, I guess it's close, depending on how you view the contingency, but the interest, the construction loan interest by itself was almost a $3 million differentiation, based on how long you're holding it, how large it is, and what the interest rate changes are. I couldn't tell you more nuanced around supply chain and labor, if the, you know, if the painters were costing more than the, you know, than the washing machines, that kind of thing. I, I wouldn't know that. But that's, that's roughly where it stands.
Anything else? Any other councilists? I'm going to back up for you. Ms. Ailes?
Mr. Vice President, if I could just clarify the record, because I, I actually misstated the answer to Counselor St. Helier's question earlier on the balance in the fund. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear. The 656,000 that is left in the fund is before this vote, so this vote would bring it down to 256 remaining in the fund prior to the FY23 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Any other councilists? Counselor St. Helier?
Just to follow up on that point, I guess, and maybe this is best answered by Ms. Richter, is there any insight as to the decision to fund 400,000 versus the ask of 500,000?
Ms. Richter, can you just?
Thank you.
On that, I can only tell you, there was a lot of discussion among the committee members, and we had lots of different opinions, and we felt that 400,000 left at least enough in the balance to do something, whereas if we had awarded the 500,000, it would leave us with very little in the, in the pot, in case another emergency out-of-cycle situation cropped up. And I, I think we've never had, we've always had a lot more money left over at the end of the funding round. This is the first time we've really used up all our budget, and part of that was because of the big open space grants that we made this year, a million one for Moraine Farm, and also that the 400,000 in this grant brought this particular project up to 1.1 million, too, and it was felt that they were equally valuable to the city. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's very helpful. Thank you.
It was a very long discussion, I would add.
Counselor Hausmann, I saw your hand up. Did you want to?
Yes, please, for Mr. DeFranza.
Mr. DeFranza, question from Counselor Hausmann?
I was hoping.
Good evening. I, I'd just like to echo my colleagues' comments about, this is a terrific project, and happy to support it. So, two questions, a lot of which have sort of already been touched on, just to clarify. If the council votes in favor of this, will you have all of the funding you need to move forward, or are there other places you will still be going to? In other words, will there be more time necessary before you have complete funding, before you can start construction? And then the second question is, once that date is, once that event occurs, where you have all of your funding that you need secured, do you anticipate, when do you anticipate construction will actually start, and theoretically at least, finish?
So I think that was four questions, so he went up to you, Counselor Bone, if you want another try at it. So I think the, the short answer is no, there won't, there won't be any other additional funds needed, no, there's no more time needed, with the caveat that one of the sources is the state historic tax, tax credit, which comes in generally small rounds. So you have to, even if you know, like, we're going after another 1.2, generally, the Secretary of State's only going to issue about $200,000 in a whack, so you know you're going to have to ask for that multiple times and bridge it, but it's very reliable. So that's the one nuance, I would say, but so there's no delay on that. All of the funds, from DHCD's perspective, they even view that as a done, essentially a done deal, but you have to go four more times to collect it before you're going to be able to get that. But it doesn't slow the project down, it doesn't slow the start down, it's just the way that that works, because this is, this is a historic project on Lankacre Point, which was new construction. So that's, that's a good way to think about that. This would then close probably later this fall and start construction around the end of the year, and it will be a significant, this is a couple of years' worth of construction, so you're probably not occupying until the fourth quarter of '24, something to that effect.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set.
Any other councilists? One more chance, if anyone from the public wishes to speak or say anything. All good. Then I'm going to close hearing on Order 189 and refer it back to Committee on Legal Affairs.
Is she in?
Yeah, do you mind?
Just waiting for the Madam President to come back in, because she had to recuse herself for this order.
Thank you very much, Vice President Rattendo. I appreciate you taking care of that public hearing for us. And thank you, councilors, and thank you to everyone who was here for the public hearing as well, and we'll take that matter up later this evening. That brings us to acceptance of minutes from previous meetings. We have three sets of minutes to accept tonight. We have one from our Finance and Property and Public Services Meeting on April 25th, 2022, one from the Special City Council Meeting on June 6th, 2022, and one from Finance and Property on June 15th, 2022. I would entertain a motion to approve all three sets of minutes.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries 8-0, and all of those minutes are accepted and approved. Ms. Dixon, let's go to communication, actually, no. I'm sorry, I just realized I skipped right over. We have a citizen speaker tonight. Thank you. And thank you very much to our citizen speaker for being patient while I just took care of one little bit of business. So our citizen speaker section, we'll go back to, we have one citizen speaker signed up this evening. For those who are following along in person or watching on BevCam, at our meetings, we do have this section of the agenda. If you are a resident and you are interested in addressing the council, you can do so by contacting the clerk's office no later than 9:30 the morning of a meeting, and these spots are first come, first served. There's up to three. Tonight, we have one, and we have Stacy Ames, and Ms. Ames, former Counselor Ames, nice to see you on the side of the podium. If you would begin by just saying your name and address for the record, I know you know that, and then you have up to five minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much for having me, and I, I emailed around 9:15, so.
Just squeaked in.
Just squeaked in. Stacy Ames, 3 Prospect Street. It's a pleasure to be here. First, I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. As we gather here in this place, we acknowledge and honor the original indigenous inhabitants of this land, the Narm, Kege, and Pawtucket bands of the Massachusetts Tribal Nation, which continues today through the membership of the Massachusetts Tribe. We acknowledge their ancestral and continued connection to the land. We also recognize our obligations to this land, to better environmental care and stewardship, to which the indigenous people who care for it have long called us. As we work towards diversity, equity, and inclusion, we acknowledge the importance of lifting up and inviting in many voices, including those indigenous people, and of including those voices and perspectives in our discourse, in our decision-making, and in our actions. So, again, it's very nice to see everyone here tonight. I hope you enjoyed your summer break. I'm here tonight to talk about power and who's in charge. Did you know, in Salem, just across the bridge, they have an organizational chart in their budget? They really do. And not only that, you might be surprised to know that at the top of that organizational chart are the residents. In fact, this is exactly how it should be. The visual of the residents at the top of the org chart is striking. It serves to remind the elected officials in Salem that each one of them works for the residents, not for the city. It's no different on this side of the bridge, even though there are many discussions around how we have a strong mayor charter. Fact is, monetary decisions cannot be enacted without council approval. If Mayor Cahill's, Cahill proposes a spend that you believe is off-target, you have the power to vote in such a way as to make a course correction. He manages the city, but the council votes up and down on his projects and priorities. Tonight, the administration submitted Order 191, a $1 million loan authorization for maintenance work that needs to be performed to portions of the North Beverly Brook. Mayor Cahill is asking for monies to clear out parts of Ward 3 that are severely adversely affected by flooding. No doubt, this work needs to be done. On the surface, it's a good thing. The climate is changing in Beverly, needs to do more, much more, to make sure our people, business, and infrastructure is safe. My question for all of you is, how does this relate to the Jordan Street neighbors? Will this solve their devastating, repeated flooding issues? It might. If you lived in this neighborhood with repeated flooding incidents that resulted in mold, which in turn drives up cases of asthma and other chronic lung ailments, would the answer of "it might" satisfy you? I would like to ask each of you councilors, if you believe you work for the residents, then is now the time to take a step back relative to the vote in front of you and look at a bigger picture? Before committing to spend this money on this very specific project, would our community be better served to take a wider lens view? Over the years, our city has built up around this area, as we have in many areas, our budget depends on new growth, and there is a housing shortage. Unfortunately, the building expansion has not included upgrades to the infrastructure to keep neighbors safe. Not only is there repeated flooding, there are repeated rat interactions. There were 25 reported rat interactions the week after the last flood in this neighborhood. I appreciate that there's a joint subcommittee meeting on the rat problem. This neighborhood has a very specific rat problem that is directly related to flooding. Given that the city council has had hearings, visited the site, and committed to working towards a solution quickly, I'm here this evening to ask that you either vote no to the request for funds, only to do the work on the lower portion of North Beverly Brook, or you add a stipulation that this work include Jordan Street. I think it's critical to understand that floodwaters, that the floodwaters flow down from the Varian site. This adds urgency to the situation. The good news is that Senator Lovely has committed to helping find the funding to remediate the flooding problem on Jordan Street. However, she needs a plan submitted by the city. This gives the perfect opportunity to widen the scope of this project to include Jordan Street. I respectfully ask that you consider the power that you all have. You can change the trajectory of this project so that it helps those on Jordan Street. Those residents need you to work for them to help resolve this issue. They have waited a long time already. You have an opportunity to use your power to vote in a way that makes this project include planning on Jordan Street. And once a plan is submitted, Senator Lovely will help find the city funding for it. This is a fabulous opportunity. Beverly has invested to fix Ward 1 flooding and Ward 6 flooding, and you now have the power to take a course correction so that this project will include an update to the infrastructure in Ward 3 to fix this flooding problem, too. It's an opportunity I hope you take advantage of. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ames. Thank you for being here with us tonight and for sharing your words. And councilors, there will be a request to set a public hearing on this matter later this evening. With that, let's go to communications from His Honor the Mayor. Although, before we do that, I will do something I should have done at the beginning, which is just go around and recognize a few of the other people who are here in the room with us. We do have Brian Ailes, our Finance Director. I know some of you already had speaking parts in the public hearing, but I missed introducing you. Mr. Brian Ailes, our City Finance Director, Chahayani, if I'm pronouncing your last name wrong, I want to apologize. Our new Assistant Finance Director, thank you for being here with us. We also have Police Chief John LeLashur is here with us. Catherine Barrett, our City Grants Director, is here with us this evening. Darlene Nguyen, our Planning Director. Jocelyn Rael Kersker, the Mayor's Chief of Staff, is here with us. Jesse Dole, Assistant Solicitor, and Dylan Benson from the Solicitor's Office. And I think I have all of our city staff. And School Committee Member Lorinda Visnick, Ward 6, back in her familiar back row seat. Nice to see you there, Ms. Visnick. Wouldn't feel like a city council meeting without you. And I think, I think I got everybody. Ronnie's not here, right? Okay, I always miss Ms. Jacobson somehow. Okay, thank you very much. With that, let's go to communications from His Honor the Mayor, Ms. Dixon.
Order number 191. Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request that you approve a 1 million loan authorization for maintenance work that needs to be performed to portions of the North Beverly Brook, most specifically areas located in the reaches between Cabot/Herrick Street intersection and the Lower Shoe Pond. These areas are subgrade, sorry, these areas are subgrade buried portions of the brook that extend beneath Cabot Street, through the Balk playground beneath the MBTA railroad, and beneath the Cummings Center Office Park Building and parking facilities, ultimately terminating in the Lower Shoe Pond. These segments of pipe have sand, sediment, and potentially other debris that must be removed- segments of pipe have sand sediment and potentially other debris that must be removed to ensure maximum volume flow of stormwater can be effectively conveyed through these pipes, as well as ensuring the natural water courses and impacted habitats are protected. This work is necessary periodically and was most recently performed back in 2009. It is important to perform this work during low-flow periods and given the need, along with the recent summer drought conditions. We feel that overall costs can be lessened by performing the work this fall. This loan authorization would allow the city to issue a contract and start the work. It would be my intent and recommendation to ultimately utilize any budgetary funds available at year-end or fund balance to hopefully rescind this loan authorization and avoid borrowing at all for this project. Please initiate action on this matter at your next city council meeting, August 15, 2022. This loan authorization request will require a public hearing be set prior to a city council vote, and I have attached the draft language recommended by our bond counsel. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property to set that public hearing.
Order 192. Dear Honorable City Council, enclosed, well, this is the same letter for 192 and 192A, so I'll just read the one letter.
Thank you.
Dear Honorable City Council, enclosed, please find two proposed orders which would grant a permanent easement to One Anchor Point LLC at the Anchor Point Family Housing Community under construction at 108 Sawyer Road. This area of the easement is a narrow rectangle measuring approximately 13 square feet, 26 and 1/2 feet by .79, um, feet by .04 feet, which relates to a portion of a retaining wall that encroaches onto the Sawyer Road right of way. The city and One Anchor Point have agreed to language regarding said easement. An appraisal has determined that the value of the permanent easement is $35 and is attached for your reference. Because the value is under $35,000, no bids are required to be solicited. Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16, the council must first declare the property available for disposition in an order attached for your consideration and approval. The second attached order for your consideration and approval authorizes the city to convey the easement to One Anchor Point LLC. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dixon. Please refer Order 192 and 192A to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order 193. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. Wayne Miller, 5 Pasture Road, to serve as the Planning Board Representative on the Open Space and Recreation Committee. His term will be effective until August 31, 2025. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order 194. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $498, wait, yeah, $498,200 bottleneck reduction program grant from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Mass. DOT. This funding will be used for needed signalization improvements and installation of modern controllers at Route 62 intersection crossings at McKay Street, McPherson Drive, Beckford Street, and Center Drive at Elliott Street to address significant traffic congestion bottlenecks. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayoral approval before any grant earmarked, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by acting on this matter at your upcoming meeting on August 15, 2022. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill.
Thank you very much. Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 195. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Captain Jake Kryling to serve as the Fire Department's Representative on the Parking and Traffic Commission. Captain Kryling will fulfill the term of Captain Ryan Laracy, who has recently promoted to Deputy Chief. His term is to be effective until March 1, 2025. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs, and congratulations to Captain Laracy on his promotion.
Order number 196. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $200,000 Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to complete a comprehensive resiliency study of the Bass River area. This grant requires a 25% match, which has already been appropriated as part of the FY23 budget. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayoral approval before any grant earmarked, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by acting on this matter at your upcoming meeting on August 15, 2022. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you. Please refer that to Finance and Property.
Order number 197. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Ms. Nancy Marino, 9 Wellman Street, Beverly, to serve on the Permanent Building Commission. Her term is to be effective until September 30, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Counsel President, I'd like to put a hold on this order.
On Order 197?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Order number 198. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. Joshua Doxy, 244 Lothrup Street, Beverly, to serve on the Beverly Airport Commission. His term is to be effective until December 31, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Counsel President, I'd like to put a hold on this order.
Order number 191. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, one, did I say 191? Order number 199. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. George Gomes, 63 Bridge Street Apartment 2, Beverly, to serve on the Beverly Planning Board. His term is to be effective until December 31, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Okay. Order number 208. Dear Honorable City Council, the amended memorandum of agreement between National Grid and the city of Beverly related to the 150 kilowatt, right, electric transmission cable, KV, electric transmission cable project sets out specific payments and reimbursements that National Grid will be obligated to pay the city. Specifically, there is a clause to reimburse the city up to $315,000 for reasonable expenses incurred in hiring an engineering consultant to oversee construction of the project, to ensure that it does not adversely affect city infrastructure and planned construction projects along the construction route. In addition, National Grid shall reimburse the city of Beverly for directed police patrols up to $155,775 if the city determines that such patrols are necessary to manage traffic on designated detours and other side roads. The total value of these two reimbursements is $470,000, $470,775. As their reimbursements, the city must first incur the cost before National Grid will be obligated to pay, to issue any payments to the city. In order to incur these costs, appropriation is required. Therefore, I ask that you set a public hearing during your upcoming meeting, and I respectfully request your approval to raise an appropriate additional funds of $475,775 to be placed into a project fund and used over the course of the project. The reimbursements from National Grid, as we receive them, will be placed back into the general fund as general revenue to replenish the initial appropriation. The last financial component of the memorandum of agreement is for a payment from National Grid of $3,250,000 to allow the city to hire its own contractors to perform the final pavement restoration along this project route. This payment, once received, will require a separate action by the city council at a later date depending on timing of the project, the construction and repaving schedules, and the timing of the payment itself. We look forward to discussing this further at an upcoming meeting. Please initiate action on this appropriation request this evening by scheduling a public hearing for your next city council meeting. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Please refer that to the Subcommittee on Finance and Property to set that public hearing. Let's go to Communications from other city officers and boards, please.
Order number 200. Dear Honorable City Council, effective immediately, the law regarding assignment of police officers at polling places is amended to require the city council to assign police details to polling places. Previously, this was a responsibility of the Chief of Police. Since this change is taking effect before the primary election on September 6, 2022, I'm requesting that you assign 24 police officers to the six polling locations, one per precinct for each morning and afternoon shift. By law, we are required to have a police detail at all 12 precincts. The hours vary from 6:00 a.m. until approximately 9:00 p.m. Once we have the order from the council, Chief Lashere and I will work together to assign the positions. Thank you for your prompt attention to this important matter. Sincerely, Lisa Kent, City Clerk.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dixon. Chief Lashere, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to come to the podium and just offer your thoughts on this request from the city clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Basically, it's really, it's a change in law, law and semantics, but it's something we do anyway with the clerk. We will be at the polling places. I know it says 24 officers. Sometimes one officer will work both the day and afternoon shift, so they're always filled. And we're actually making a recommendation to the contractors on that day to cancel all outside details, which will free up enough officers to be able to cover the shifts at the polling places.
Thank you very much, Chief. So councillors, this is a request for us to approve this request from the clerk, which would then allow the clerk's office to work with the chief to assign needed officers at all polling places. So I would entertain a motion to approve Order 200.
So moved.
Second. Are there any further discussion or questions on Order 200? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Thank you very much. And thank you, Chief, for being here to assist us or answer any questions we might have had with that.
All right. Next one?
Yes, please.
Order number 201. Dear fellow council members, I would like to hereby reappoint, subject to your review and any recommendations, Mr. David Brewster, 9 Carver Street, to represent Ward 1 on the Open Space and Recreation Committee. His term will be effective until August 23, 2025. Very truly yours, Todd Rotundo, Ward 1 councillor.
Thank you very much. Please refer that to the Subcommittee on Legal Affairs, and thank you, Councilor Rotundo, for that.
Order 206. This is a petroleum storage registration for 61 Cabot Street.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order 209, an application for a fortune teller's license for Lilian Perry, 8 Appleton Ave.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order 210, an application for a fortune teller's license for Darlene Witham, 11 Burl, uh, wait, 113 Burl Street, Swampscott, Mass.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Okay. Order 211. Dear Honorable City Council, I request your approval to use FY 2023 appropriated funds toward the payment of 11 prior-year invoices totaling $63,660. The attached invoices will be paid out of their respective department's fiscal 2023 budget with your approval. Per Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, the required certifications have been filed with the city auditor. I kindly request your approval to resolve these matters. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Bryant Ailes, Finance Director.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order 212. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to renominate James Passanisi to continue his service as Ward 4 representative to the Open Space and Recreation Committee in a new three-year term. His initial appointment was approved by the council in April to fill the remainder of a vacant term which ends August 31, 2022. I am pleased that James would like to continue his service in a full term, 2022 to 2025, and request the council approve his reappointment. Attached is his letter of interest and resume for your reference. Respectfully, Scott Hausman, City Councillor, Ward 4.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs, and thank you, Councilor Hausman, for that.
Order number 213.
I can read it if you want. I'll read this one. I know the author. Dear Honorable Council, I also immediately saw a typo. Dear Honorable Council, as you recall, as part of our grant of location approval for National Grid's N192 Cable Regional Reliability Project, Condition 10 of the grant of location calls for the council to create a citizens advisory committee with whom National Grid must meet before commencing construction work on this project, and with whom National Grid must continue to meet at regular intervals as set forth in the grant of location for the duration of the project. After receiving emails and letters of interest from members of the community interested in serving on this committee, I hereby appoint the following citizens to serve on the N192 Citizen Advisory Committee. Their work as a committee to continue until the project itself is complete. Blythe Hazen, 19 Abbott Street, Tim Avril, 165 Lothrup Street, Tiffany Collins, 35 Broadway, Karen Fogarty, 169 Lothrup Street, Michelle Green, 5 Toltree Drive, David Mahood, 191 Lothrup Street, Matt DeChico, 178 Lothrup Street, and Jane Knight, 7 Wellman Street. In addition, I hereby appoint Councilor Estelle Rand, Ward 2, and Councilor Scott Hausman, Ward 4, as council representatives on this committee, their wards being the most directly impacted by the project. Respectfully yours, Julie R. Flowers, City Council President, City Councillor-at-Large. And let's refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs, please.
Okay. Order 75A. Dear Honorable City, or Dear Honorable Council, on May 12, 2022, Legal Affairs.
Ms. Dixon, I'm sorry, before, yes, but it was my fault because I didn't say the section we were on. Can we go to Communications, Applications, and Petitions?
Oh. What about?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm the one who skipped ahead.
That's okay.
You were in the right place.
Okay.
I should never doubt you, Ms. Dixon.
No, you should, but it's fine. Okay, so now we're on Order Number 75A.
We are. Thank you.
Nope, that's fine. Dear Honorable Council, on May 12, 2022, Legal Affairs completed its review of the proposed amendments to the city charter submitted to the city council by the Charter Review Committee. As requested by the council, Marilyn Contreras of the Collins Center and I redlined the previously filed draft to reflect further amendments proposed by Legal Affairs. The Legal Affairs changes are reflected in the text and flagged in associated comments highlighted in green. Please note that the draft also includes a handful of further amendments that Ms. Contreras and I suggest for consideration by the full council. Those suggestions are in the yellow highlighted comments. Ms. Contreras and I will be available to answer questions that the city council may have regarding the draft amendments. It would be appreciated if the city clerk would coordinate the dates with us in advance so that we can ensure we are available as needed. Sincerely, Stephanie M. Williams.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dixon. And councillors, we'll be taking up the charter on a special, a special meeting on September 27 at 7:00 p.m. So that will be Order 75A and Order 75. Now, let's go to Communications, Applications, and Petitions, please, Ms. Dixon.
All right. This is Order Number 202, a petition from National Grid, Plan 29756006, Pond Street, for a grant of location.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services to set a public hearing.
Order Number 203. And this is a petition from National Grid, Plan 29756006, Pond Street, to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduits.
Thank you. Please also refer that to the Committee on Public Services to set a public hearing.
Order Number 204. A petition from National Grid, Plan 29756012, and this is a Chapman Street grant of location.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services to set a public hearing.
Order Number 205. A petition from National Grid, Plan 30586010, Weber Street, to install underground electric conduits.
Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services to set a public With that, I would entertain a motion to take a break for some committee work.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So we will take a break for committee work. We'll have Legal Affairs stay here and continue on BevCam. Finance and Property in the committee room, please, and Public Services on the bench. Finance and Property in the committee room, please, and Public Services on the bench.
So first up on our request here is order number, where's the order?
I thought this was Finance and Property.
Oh, we have questions for you at some point, though, so can we?
Yes.
We'll come get you. Yeah. I mean, a couple things. Well, is it okay if we, I'll just have somebody come grab you if that's possible? I really appreciate that. Okay. All right. This is, let's take up order number 189, and that is the late file that was submitted regarding the CPC funding for the Beverly Village of Living and Arts. Do you have any questions?
I don't. You asked a question I wanted to ask when I was, when I wasn't allowed to ask. You asked, so I'm pretty comfortable with it, so I'm good.
Okay. I would accept the motion to approve order number 189, the funding for Beverly Village for the Living and Arts. Thank you. Second, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, two to zero. Okay. Okay. Order number 201, which is the reappointment, this is from you, Councilor Rotundo, I believe, right? The reappointment of Mr. David Brewster to represent Ward 1 in the Open Space and Recreation Committee. Any comments or questions?
I do not have any.
Okay.
He's a reappointment, so I'm comfortable.
Excellent. Thank you for making that recommendation. And you spoke with Mr. Brewster to make sure he's still willing to-
Yes. We didn't have to gag him. We didn't have to threaten him to stay.
Okay. Excellent. I would accept the motion to approve the reappointment in order number 201.
So moved.
Second, those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Order number 206. All right. And so this is the application for a new petroleum storage license for 61 Cabot Street Real Estate LLC. Questions or comments?
I have a question on this one. I don't, I'm not comfortable passing this one next. I know there was some things going on. That's right next to the restaurant, so that's the Super Petroleum.
Yeah.
Will we hold that for now until we can call this?
Yes, I agree completely.
Seems to be some stuff going on next door. I just don't know what it is.
Okay. So, motion to hold order number 206.
So moved.
Second, those in favor? Aye. We're holding that one. Okay. Order number 209. And this is the application for a fortune teller's license for Lillian Perry. And I-
Do them together.
Yeah. And order number 210. I think, do you have questions?
Yeah, I think we should hold that until we can call them.
I do too.
I'm hopeful they didn't leave, but if there is some-
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. I think, we think that perhaps both Darlene and Lillian were here earlier, and we let them slip out the door before, I didn't realize that was them.
They did.
No, they did, I'm sure.
We do not have to, they do.
Yeah, we're, we don't have the same skills that they have. So I'm sorry if they are watching at home, please, we'll reach out to you. And we're gonna hold, I would accept a motion to hold orders number 209 and 210, please.
So moved.
Second, those in favor? Aye. Motion passes, two to zero. Okay. Okay. Order number 213. And here's where a little assistance from, from the legal department would be fantastic. Okay, so order number 213 is the establishment of the Citizen Advisory Committee to the N-192 Citizen Advisory Committee. And we're gonna get some information from the Solicitor's Office just on some of the details of communicating with National Grid and as the committee starts up, kind of what the recommended process is. Do you have any thoughts or questions in the meantime?
I don't have any. I mean, obviously, it's the citizens that are directly affected and with the recommendation of you and Councilor Hausman on it, it's a good thing. Obviously, some advice from Solicitor Dole to kind of give us guidance for you as well as the representative from National Grid would be helpful.
Thank you. Thank you, Dylan, and thank you, Mr. Dole, for coming back into the meeting. I guess one of the main questions we have just on the establishment of the N-192 Citizen Advisory Committee is the process of communicating with National Grid. We've, having just gone through, you know, our process for putting this, this project forward, we were not communicating, as councilors, we were not communicating directly with National Grid. Going forward with this committee, do you have a recommendation on how to sort of start the committee up in terms of open meeting law and direct communication?
I have no idea. I, I, this is, I've-
You're not alone. I'm not alone.
I, I could, I could, I could field your question. I could return an answer to you, but I-
Okay.
I'm, I'm not familiar. I mean, I haven't been part of that, so.
Right. Okay. Councilor Rotundo?
Thank you. So, Mr. Dole, could we at least, if your office could send an email to National Grid, at least they stop the communication, to find out, because I guess, that's the biggest thing, is how legally is it able, from National Grid's perspective, they're not allowed to directly, are not able to directly communicate with this committee? Is that the understanding that we have?
I, 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 I mean, I, again, I'm not familiar with this, this topic, but I would be hesitant to issue a boilerplate statement that there can be no communication between this, this advisory committee and National Grid. I, I, I don't want to say absolutely they can. I'm not going to say absolutely they cannot. And if there is a Citizens Advisory Committee that's being appointed by the city council, I would, I would respectfully suggest I, the Solicitor's Office should not be the body communicating with National Grid on behalf of the Citizens Advisory Committee. So if you'd like me to take this on board and get an answer back to you shortly, you know, I can do so. I mean, that seems like a process question. And I'll be rhetorical and ask, when we have these sort of citizens committees that are, that are formed, I would presume that, you know, the meet, how this commit, that committee communicates not only with the council itself, but other city departments and non-city entities would most likely be the same, so.
Okay. Thank you. Follow-up question? Councilor Rotundo?
No, I appreciate that. Thank you, National Grid.
What's that?
Ask National Grid.
Okay. Well, I think, I mean, I think I'm comfortable leaving this with you to follow up with us on, you're right, it is a process question. I think because this is just sort of the first time that we've put together this type of advisory committee for such a big project, and it comes on the tails of such a long legal-ish process, that there's a little hesitation on, we just want to make sure we get the communication right as it's establishing. Since Councilor Hausman and myself are the city councilors appointed to that committee, I'm comfortable just being the, the two of us and you communicating about this process going forward. Does that-
Yeah, in a general sense, all, all, all bodies, all, all public bodies are governed by the open meeting law, and the open meeting law prohibits deliberations of the body once, once quorum's met. So it's, and then obviously, there's an acon prohibition on serial communications, so obviously, outside of a properly, properly noticed public meeting, you know, it would be improper for, you know, a quorum of the body to be communicating and deliberating over a topic that's in front of the, front of the body. So at this stage, seeing how that, that the appointments are just being made, I'm going to, again, presume that there's nothing immediately for the committee to communicate to National Grid. So, you know, if you, if you'd like a, a description of how this, how this committee would, moving forward, communicate back and forth with National Grid, I would liken it to the communications between the council and grid during this whole process where it was Council President Flowers, you know, who really was a point person in discussions, would not either National Grid or, or through, through council that was retained by the, by the council, council that was retained by the council.
Right. That makes sense. Okay. I'm comfortable going forward with this, knowing that we're gonna follow up and reach, and like you said, this, we're just establishing this, so I don't-
There would be nothing at this point to, to delay the appointment of the, of the members of the committee.
Right. Right. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I would accept an order to approve order number 213.
So moved.
Second, those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay. And that is all we have on the Legal Affairs agenda, so I would accept a motion to adjourn Committee of Legal Affairs.
So moved.
Second?
Oh, George Gomes.
Oh, let's see. We do have, thank you, Ms. Nguyen, order number 199 is an appointment of George Gomes to the Planning Board, and my note from the clerk's office says we have to wait seven days to vote on that. Oh, okay. Thank you. I would love to meet you, Mr. Gomes. Thank you. Can you tell we've been on summer break for about four or five weeks? Mr. Gomes, would you please come to the podium? And we'd love to just meet you, and thank you, Ms. Nguyen, for keeping me on track with that.
Yeah, apologies. I didn't know what the process was either, so happy to meet you. Looking forward to hopefully moving forward with this process. Happy to answer any questions you have. And I know Todd well, I'm a constituent, but it's nice to meet you, Councilor Rand, as well.
Nice to meet you. And Councilor Rotundo, would you like to ask a question?
I am good, actually. I'm very comfortable. I do know Mr. Gomes for many years. I know his family well. I know he's very advocate, he has a big advocacy right now with the Bass River-Ovalay District. He has a view on that as well, so I think he would be a good addition to the Planning Department. So I'm very comfortable with this appointment.
Good, thanks. And what's your, what, what has drawn you to volunteer for the city?
Sure. Been interested in housing for a while. I think during the, all the Bass River discussions, which I know have been kind of put on hold now, I started to get a little bit more involved through the Ward 1 Rosad Civic Association. So, yeah, I, I feel strongly that we have a housing, you know, issue, crisis, I'd call it, not only in Beverly, but in the, in the region, in the state. And, you know, just thought this would be a good kind of route to, to get involved. It was actually Councilor Bowen who had recommended that I look into some of the various boards, so.
That's great. Well, you come recommended by two amazing councilors, so that's, that's also a plus. And I love that you're talking about housing and affordability, and also that you hail from Rhyleside. I think that those are all great things for our Planning Board. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't. So seven days, it sounds like, and-
Yeah.
I, I know you guys don't have another meeting for another month or so, right?
Right. So we'll, what will happen is that after we do meet again and take up your appointment, then at that time, the clerk's office will reach out to you so you can get sworn in and become a voting member. And actually, Ms. Dixon, we'll follow up with you on sort of how you can participate in the meantime by either attending meetings but not voting and things like that.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, now I can adjourn Legal Affairs Committee, please.
So moved.
Second, those in favor? Aye. Legal Affairs Committee is adjourned. Thank you. All right. 7:55.[1489.58]
I, I feel strongly that we have a housing, you know, issue, crisis, I'd call it, not only in Beverly, but in the, in the region, in the state, and, you know, just thought this would be a good kind of route to, to get involved. It was actually Councilor Bowen who had recommended that I look into some of the various boards, so.
That's great. Well, you come recommended by two amazing counselors, so that's, that's also a plus. And I love that you're talking about housing and affordability, and also that you hail from Rousehead. I think that those are all great things for our planning board. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't. So, seven days, it sounds like, and...
Yeah.
I, I know you guys don't have another meeting for another month or so, right?
Right. So will, what will happen is that after we do meet again and take up your appointment, then at that time, the clerk's office will reach out to you so you can get sworn in and become a voting member. And actually, Ms. Dixon will follow up with you on sort of how you can participate in the meantime by either attending meetings but not voting, and things like that.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you so much for being here. Yeah, thank you. Okay, now I can adjourn Legal Affairs Committee, please.
So moved.
Second, those in favor, aye, Legal Affairs Committee is adjourned. Thank you. All right, 7:55.
Thank you, everyone. Calling back to order, the full City Council after our break for some committee work. And we will resume in our agenda, picking up at unfinished business from a previous meeting, which really is just a quick reminder of something that we did cover earlier when we came to order 75A, which is that we will be taking up the question of the charter at our special meeting on September 27th at 7:00 PM. And as you heard Ms. Dixon read, we did receive the updated copy of a draft of the charter with all of the changes and suggestions that came from Legal Affairs Subcommittee, from the Solicitor's Office. So, thanks to Solicitor Williams and Marilyn Contreras from the Collins Center for their work to bring all of that together. And thanks again to Councilor Rand and the Legal Affairs Subcommittee as well for doing that work. And we will pick that up for some final votes on September 27th. Which brings us to motions and orders. And so we will pick up with order 181, Ms. Dixon.
Order 181?
And Ms. Dixon, oh, sorry, is going to read for us a letter that we received. Counselors, we had talked about order 181, this is proposed amendments to Chapter 270 of the city ordinances on parking and traffic. We received a letter today, not today, I'm sorry, we received a letter that came with your agenda packet from the Solicitor's Office. So Ms. Dixon will read that into the record for us, and then Mr. Dole, I saw you move towards the podium, so I'll give you the floor if you would like. But we can have Ms. Dixon read your letter into the record first.
Dear Honorable City Council, as requested, the following summarizes the suggested amendments to order number 181. Section 270-63, violations and penalties, increasing the proposed fine for non-electric vehicle parking and an electrical, an electric vehicle charging station space from $20 to $50. Section 270-63, violations and penalties, insert electric vehicle parking in an electric vehicle charging station space if not actively charging, $50. Section 270-66, downtown Beverly Parking District, section B2F, insert electric vehicles shall not park in spaces designated as electric vehicle charging stations if not actively charging. Section 270-66, downtown Beverly Parking District, section B3A, delete Milton Street from Cabot Street to Broadway. Section 270-66, downtown Beverly Parking District, section B3C, edit as follows. Residents who live within the following area shall have access to a residential parking permit that allows them to park in time limited on-street parking for longer than two hours. Up to two resident parking permits will be available per household. And section 270-67, downtown Beverly Parking District, prohibitions, insert Milton Street both entire length. Sincerely yours, Jessie P. Dole, Assistant City Solicitor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dixon. And counselors, you'll recall that we did talk about this order before our break for the summer recess, and then it was referred to the Parking and Traffic Commission, and some of these suggested friendly amendments are coming back following that conversation. Mr. Dole, do you have more that you would like to add?
Yes, I would just, I wanted to point out, it was included in the agenda packet for tonight, but didn't make it on the agenda itself, is a communication from August 9th from the Packing, Parking and Traffic Commission. As, as you remember, the, the council did, did request that the commission review the proposed amendments. I will point out, my communication to the council includes, and I'll leave it to the council members to, to read Chairman Benefentos' communication, but the only thing that's missing from that is my last recommended amendment, excuse me, the, the last on the bottom of page one dealing with section B3C about the two to four hour, oh, my apologies, the, I submitted a redlined version to the clerk's office, and it looks like my, my redlined edit got accepted. So, that last proposed amendment, residents who live within the following area shall have access to a residential parking permit that allows them to park in time limited on-street parking for longer than, as written, is read as four hours, the proposed amendment would be for two hours. That was, that, that was missed in the first draft of the amendments. Let's make sure that this, this portion of the amendments, that this portion of the ordinances matches another amendment that was submitted to council. So, hopefully I didn't confuse anyone too much with that. But, but as I said, the, the commission did a, my recommended amendments to the amendments are the recommended amendments to the amendments from the commission, so I can answer any, any questions the council may have. As to these proposed amendments to the amendments, or the amendments that are previously, were previously reviewed and discussed before the council.
Never felt so strongly like I'm on a Parks and Rec episode. Thank you very much, Mr. Dole. Ms. Nguyen, was there anything that you wanted to add before we open up for questions? Our plan director, Ms. Nguyen?
Uh, no, I just have other questions.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Counselors, any questions, either for Assistant Solicitor Dole, or for Plan Director Nguyen? Councilor Hausman?
Yes, for Mr. Dole. Just, it's really a process question with the amendments to the amendments. Do we have, excuse me, any public notice issues in terms of republication and public notice and so forth?
No, no. It would require a motion from a member of the council to adopt, one, if or two, or all of the proposed, I'll say changes, rather than amendments to amendments, that are in my communication to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Bowen?
Thank you. I had just a couple of questions. One, in our previous discussion, we had talked about the lots down by the waterfront potentially being enforced as requiring payment Thursday through Saturday, but was written as Monday through Saturday. And so that, was that additional amendment made in this latest update?
No, it would, it wouldn't, no, it wouldn't be a change of the ordinance or the proposed amendments, it would just be, for lack of a better term, a policy decision that, it would be written that we could enforce for Monday through Saturday at the stated hours. But as with any parking enforcement, it's, you know, bandwidth for the, for the parking, parking enforcement staff, and decision by the, by the city to, how to, how and when to deploy personnel. So, you know, if we chose not to enforce, we choose not to enforce. And I think that was a discussion that, that Council, Councilor Rand had, you know, when we discussed this previously at the public hearing, is if, you know, I think the request was, you know, let's keep it as it's proposed to be amended, but, you know, can we at least do a slow, slow roll-in to, to the enforcement. And I, Council, Councilor Rand, I mean, you're free, I, I don't want to put my words in your mouth, but that was, to affect my, my recollection and my notes from the, the public hearing.
Councilor Bowen?
Thanks. So, that was my understanding of overall rolling out enforcement of these changes to give people some time to settle in. But I, I guess my question is, is what's written in the ordinance, what's programmed into the machines, like the kiosks, or is that also an additional piece of discretion up to and including what's, what's in the ordinance but not beyond? Because I guess my question would be, if our traffic enforcement officers are not going out and ticketing people who stay for more than two hours or who haven't paid, that's different than someone pulling into a spot, trying to follow the rules, and seeing that the rule says you are supposed to pay and leave them?
an issue as far as even the proposed amendments, that would really be, you know, a discussion that could be had, you know, independent of the amendments, about just generally how we decide to enforce, when and how we enforce. And I, as far as how we deploy parking enforcement, that's really engineering-ish question, or an engineering topic about how they do that, because I actually don't, I wouldn't be able to tell you how they, how and when they actually roll, decide when and where to drive the vehicle by with the plate reader. As far as programming the kiosk, again, I'm, that's beyond my scope of expertise, I guess.
Because I guess what I'm trying to parse out is, if I vote in favor of this package of amendments, and then I drive down to the anchor on a Tuesday at 5:00, is it going to say I have to pay or not based on?
It most likely would. I mean, generally, if we have something on the ordinances, to say you can and can't do something, we don't then parallel, you know, advertise, you don't really need to do that. So I mean, it's, you know, the decision whether to go down and actually drive through the lot is a decision made by parking enforcement anywhere in the city at any time. So I think there was a discussion about a friendly amendment to this, saying, you know, that the hours of enforcement will only be Thursday, Friday, Saturday. But my memory, my recollection of the discussion was, let's keep it as written, with the request that, can you, for lack of a better term, can you kind of go easy down there, out of the starting gate? And as far as what that means, that's not something I could answer, it would be parking, the parking enforcement and the engineering department.
Okay, thank you. I think my notes to myself may have been off. I was thinking we were going to see the amendment for Thursday to Saturday, and in addition to that, go easy on the enforcement as people get used to that sort of weekend, but.
You're.
Read differently.
We may have, we may have written different things down, or different, you know, I'm not saying that I don't have a transcript of discussion, but that was my understanding. If I'm incorrect, I will gladly stand corrected. And also, it is, you know, you have the power to decide how you want to vote on these amendments.
Right, yeah, and that's why I'm asking the questions, because I need to decide whether to propose an additional amendment or not. So that is helpful. My other two quick questions, I'm not sure if there are the right people in the room to answer them, but I appreciated the Parking and Traffic Commission making recommendations around electric vehicle spots, and just wanted to confirm, it's probably an engineering department question, but the feasibility of sort of how those spots are currently used. And the goal of the ordinance is to encourage electric vehicle use and make it easy, and sort of reward electric vehicle users for charging in these spots, and prevent people from using those spots that are in really useful areas who aren't charging. But the additions of, you know, electric vehicles not parking in the spots while they're not charging, just wanted to confirm that that's feasible. It's not like someone's going to be ticketed for showing up 10 minutes after their car finished charging. And so that's sort of a usage question, and didn't know if that, since it had been amended, was run past.
So I, again, my recollection that, you know, the amendments that were submitted were just to prevent a non-EV vehicle in an EV charging station, and there was some discussion about, well, you know, there's an equal problem with electric vehicle parking there, that's not, that's just, for lack of a better term, squatting in the spot, not charging. So with the limited number of charging stations we do have, I brought that up with Parking and Traffic Commission, they wholeheartedly agreed, and actually proposed that higher fine amount that was originally suggested. And we did have a discussion at the meeting, and Lisa Chandler from Engineering was there to discuss these kiosks. So my understanding is, once you've completed your, the paid-for charge, that that meter knows the same way that if you park in a regular parking space, and you pay for 60 minutes, and you're there, you come out at 70 minutes, it's really the roll of the dice, whether the enforcement vehicle with the plate reader is driving through the parking lot at that time. There's not, you know, we don't have the capability to just sense when a vehicle is in the spot, and the timer goes off, and we electronically at 60 minutes and .001 seconds issue a ticket, either for EV station or a regular spot. It really is a luck of the draw, whether, you know, when your time is up, either in a regular spot or EV charging spot, you can get out to the vehicle and get out of the spot before the little flashing blue, yellow, white car comes driving through the parking lot. So that's my, and that was, that was something that did come up with what the technology, what technology we had that was capable of enforcing this as to just the EV vehicle that's not actively charging.
Perfect. And then just one last question. Were any of these amendments or any others proposed based on the meeting with the commercial fishermen?
No, we did not, we did not schedule anything with the commercial fishermen. I didn't, I didn't come away from the public hearing as seeing that being a condition prior to voting on the amendments. You know, I mean, we have, I can say that I've been in contact, you know, many members of the administration, and even, you know, Counsel Rotundo, I mean, the topic of parking down there has included the Harbor Management Authority for quite some time, and even prior to the discussion of these amendments. So there has been, there was a concerted effort by a number of people, you know, in my office, engineering, planning, Harbor Management Authority, not only for these amendments, but other issues, like our commercial slip leases, our recreational slip leases, you know, some issues around the Department of Transportation easement area we have under the bridge. There was a, I mean, that was, you know, that was really one of the core motivation behind these amendments. And as the amendments as written really were an attempt to try to, you know, lack of a better term, try to please as many interested parties as possible that park down there, whether it be the commercial fishermen, the recreational slip leases, people that simply just go fish on the pier, and people that park either, you know, for the anchor, or, you know, that are going to be the future customers for the restaurant at Water Street. So, you know, that was, the commercial fishermen were, I want to say, you know, a concern, at least a group that was taken into consideration in drafting these. In particular, you can see that, you know, normal lots are 8:00 AM, 8:00 PM. These amendments were drafted to the 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM to try to give that availability, that we weren't punishing commercial fishermen that might not be able to meet the two or four, any kind of time limit we had during those hours, to allow them to be able to park down there and not have to worry about getting a ticket during the day, and then trying to kind of, you know, split the, you know, lighten the enforcement a little bit to only have it 4:00 to 8:00, that if they did go out in the evening, they wouldn't be in a position, they'd be able to pay for parking if they had to, and be able to go out and return without, again, coming back to a parking ticket. So, you know, I mean, that, just that alone, that 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, was to try to split the concerns over restaurant customers, but also not trying to punish commercial fishermen for having to use that lot for their livelihood.
Let's go to Counsel Rotundo, only because it looked like you had a thought there.
Madam President, through you to Counsel Bowen.
Please.
There was a meeting with the commercial fishermen, with the mayor as well, Harbor Management was involved more recently, as well as the recreational boaters too. A lot of it was discussed about their times, because it was assumed that there were more lobstermen, and there's less lobstermen, and other types of fishermen that are there. So the consideration of time was put there. There was also discussion of whether a permit could be similar to what we have downtown with businesses to be considered, but that's a policy more than it is to do with the city ordinances, so that's also still on the table being discussed. So there was a lot of discussion with the commercial fishermen specifically to do with the ordinances being presented. It seemed that there was not a terrible amount of issues with them, that it would really have a concern to them because of the timing. The mayor was very mindful about that, to make sure that when these were being proposed, what times of the days they would be coming in, as well as, I know that a permit was really considered for each commercial fisherman, where they would not be guaranteed a space, but they would have a permit where if they found a space early in the morning, they're there, that they would not get ticketed. They could, whether, and that's where the policy hasn't come in, is whether they were to pay a fee, similar to what we do with the businesses, or if it was just their plates would be registered with the technology through Engineer, where that reader would pick it up, recognize that that is a registered plate, and it would not do anything to it. So that's what's been discussed so far. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Counsel Rotundo, for that update, that's helpful. Also, Counsel.
Yes, thank you. I thought there had been those discussions, and just didn't know if any of that was being translated into this. So it sounds like it's underway, just not needing to be reflected here.
Thank you, thank you very much, Counsel Bowen, also. Counsel Haasman.
Just to follow up on that, not to get too far afield, but I saw in the newspaper that the city is, either is or is contemplating buying the Rowan's lot for parking purposes. And was that, two questions. What is, would this ordinance apply to that lot? And two, would, was there any discussion in the Harbor Management, the meeting that you just, Counsel Rotundo just described, regarding the impact of that?
Be it Madam President.
It sounds like this is a question to you, Counsel Rotundo.
Through you to Counsel Rotundo.
So, right now with the Rowan's, obviously, Mr. Dole would have a better answer for that, but in regards to a conversation with Mr. Earl, the Chairperson of Harbor Management, it wasn't discussed, because the grant had not been granted yet, they were still pursuing it at the time. That's been much recent, I think within the last two weeks. This meeting probably occurred about a month and a month ago or so with the commercial fishermen. There was discussion that the city was pursuing Rowan's, and I don't even think right now where it's at. Again, Mr. Dole would be able to answer that question.
I'm going to have to play hall monitor. I could answer your question, in theory, if the city did acquire either the Rowan's parcel or another parcel in the city, and wanted to add it to the Downtown Beverly Parking Ordinance, I would be before you, again, with an amendment to the ordinances. Unfortunately, if you want to talk about, have a larger discussion about the acquisition of the Rowan's parcel, it's not a properly noticed topic for the agenda, on the agenda tonight. And I would just caution, getting into the details of that would raise my open meeting law radar. So, but, I think, to answer your question, in theory, if the city were to acquire the Rowan's parcel, and did want, and wish to add that to the parking inventory that is covered by this ordinance, I'd be back in front of you, because that is something, in the way the ordinance is written now, a public hearing is required to add any zone to a metered or kiosked zone. So in general, if we want to move around no parking zones, you know, no parking for the first 50 feet of a certain street, we wouldn't need to have a public hearing. But if we want to add an area in the city that's going to be a parking enforcement, not machine, but there's a term that's used in the ordinances, but for lack of a better term, if we want to put a meter on something, we have to have a public hearing prior to doing so, and that would be an amendment that would be back in front of the Council, similar to everything we've gone through with these amendments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dole. I think with that, I would entertain a motion, I know we have some potential amendments recommended from the Solicitor's Office and Parking and Traffic, but I think working parenthetically, I would entertain a motion first on Order 181, so that we can open discussion on it, and then if there are Counselors who would like to introduce one, two, or three of those amendments, or any others, we can do that. So is there a motion to approve Order 181?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Is there further discussion or desire to recommend any of the amendments to the amendments that we heard tonight? Counsel Rand.
I just have a comment that I hadn't made earlier, and.
I will take your comment.
Thank you. A lot of these changes have been kind of in the works for some time, and I look at some of the changes happening on Summit, and I've been working with Sergeant Hennaberry on those changes for longer than you might imagine, unless, of course, you're in that neighborhood, and then you know how long it's been. So a lot of these are really moving in the right direction, and I think sort of, for me, they are a follow-through from what, when we put these zones and kiosks in place to begin with, with the parking plan, the intention was that we could always follow up and work, make changes fairly easily, and tweak all the parking systems to make it better. So this gives me confidence that we're actually doing that, it's not that hard, we can make these systems better and progress with them, so I'm happy about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Rand.
That was it.
Thank you. Let's do it this way. I would entertain, I won't write on it, I would entertain a motion if a Counselor is interested in introducing the amendments to the amendments, starting with 270-63, increase in the proposed fine for non-electric vehicles in an electric vehicle charging station from $20 to $50.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor on adding this amendment?
Aye.
Aye. And this is the full set of?
This is just, we'll take them one at a time, so this is just the first, 270-63, non-electric vehicle in an electric vehicle charging station, $20 to $50. Sorry, Counsel Bowen, are you, are you yes on that one?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
So is that all in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you.
Motion carries eight zero. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adopt the amendment to the amendment 270-63, violations and penalties, insert electric vehicle parking in an electric vehicle charging station space if not actively charging, $50.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero to include this. I would entertain a motion to adopt the amendment to the amendment 270-66, Downtown Beverly Parking District, Section B2F, insert electric vehicles shall not park in spaces designated as electric vehicle charging stations if not actively charging.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Eight zero, okay, thank you. Thank you very much, that's eight zero. I would entertain a motion to the amendment, to approve the amendment to the amendment 270-66, Downtown Beverly Parking District, Section B3A, delete Milton Street from Cabot Street to Broadway.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries eight zero in that amendment to the amendment. I would entertain a motion to adopt amendment to the amendment 270-66, Downtown Beverly Parking District, Section B3C, edit as follows. Residents who live within the following area shall have access to a residential parking permit that allows them to park in time limited on-street parking for longer than two hours. Up to two resident parking permits will be available per household.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries eight zero. And finally, I would entertain a motion to adopt the amendment to the amendment, to Section 270-67, Downtown Beverly Parking District, prohibitions, insert Milton Street both entire length.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries eight zero. Are there any additional amendments that Counselors wish to propose before? With that, we have a motion and a second on the order.
Now it's amended.
Now it's amended, thank you, Ms. Dixon. Any final discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries eight zero. Thank you very much. I did not write on your paper, Ms. Dixon. Thank you very much, and thank you to Assistant Solicitor Dole, Plan Director Darlene Nguyen, and also thank you to the Parking and Traffic Commission for taking this referral from the Council and then sending back their thoughts and their insight, that was helpful for us in this conversation.
And I'd like to thank the Council for, you know, there was some fairly thoughtful deliberation about this, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dole. Thank you very much. That brings us to Ms. Dixon, we'll go to reports from committees, please.
Okay, we'll start with Finance Committee. Order Number 191 is stuck to the next order, Order Number 191. The Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a loan authorization of $1 million for maintenance work that needs to be performed to portions of the North Beverly Brook, the Committee recommended, or have considered said matter and beg leave to report as follows, recommend the public hearing be held September 19th at 7:30 PM.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Sitting in the public hearing, thank you. So we'll set that public hearing on the. So, we'll set that public hearing on the loan authorization for September 19th at 7:30 p.m.
Okay, and we have Order number 192, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding declaring the following property available for disposition. This is on Sawyer Road. Committee has considered said matter and beg leave to report as follows. Recommend the council approve the request.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. I'm going to allow Vice President Rotendo to call for the vote on this one. Counsel Rotendo, if you would just switch with me.
So, on 192-
192A, would you want to-
I didn't separate them.
Okay. Order 192, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, and then Order 192A, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding conveying a permanent easement in the area of 108 Sawyer Road to One Anchor Point LLC. Have considered said matter and beg leave to report as follows. Ooh, wit, recommend the council approve the request.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Let me go get some flowers.
Thank you very much, Vice President Rotendo.
Okay, so on Order 194, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a grant of $498,200 bottleneck reduction program from Mass DOT. Have considered said matter and beg leave to report as follows. Ooh, recommend the council approve the request.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Questions or comments on this one? Counsel Bowen.
Thank you. I just had a question that may have been addressed in committee, in which case refer me back to that, but I was curious about pedestrian access and how the signaling might impact that.
Our City Grants Director, Ms. Barrett, is coming to the podium. Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Hi, thank you. Catherine Barrett, Director of Grants for the City of Beverly. So, this grant was awarded quite quickly by Mass DOT because of the closure of the Hall Whitaker Bridge, which has put increased traffic volume on Elliott Street, and specifically between four and five intersections, that the signalization needs to be addressed and improved, just because there's more volume of traffic. So, I would assume that the pedestrian safety would also be improved with the adjustment of the signalization along Elliott Street, because there's definitely more volume of vehicles. So, it's not specifically a pedestrian-focused grant, though. It's more about managing the vehicle traffic.
Yes, thank you. And so, if there's any way, just to sort of say out loud, to the extent that city departments can push for pedestrians to be considered in that work, they, the, those intersections have become more dangerous as that volume has increased, and we have a lot of young people who cross that section, and I know the sidewalk work has, has improved access, but then you land at one or more of those intersections, so if we can ensure that that large project includes some of that focus.
I'll, I'll pass that along to Commissioner Mike Collins and our city engineer, Eric Barber, who are both working on that project.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barrett. Thank you, Counsel Bowen. The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero. Thank you very much.
Order number 196, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding a $200,000 municipal vulnerability preparedness grant from the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to complete a resiliency study of the vast over area. Have considered said matter and recommend the council approve the request.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries eight zero. And a thank you to our City Grants Director, Catherine Barrett, not only for being here with us tonight, but for your work on always looking for ways to find grants and help our city bring in more resources.
Order number 208, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding an appropriation of $470,775 for national grid expenses. That will be reimbursed by National Grid. Have considered said matter and recommend to set the public hearing for September 19th at 8:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments on this one? I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for September 19th at 8:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, Order number 211, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom was referred the matter regarding approval of using fiscal year '23 appropriated funds for 11 prior year invoices totaling $63,660. Have considered said matter and recommend the council approve the request.
Questions or comments? Counsel Bowen.
Thank you. I had just had a question on the largest of the invoices for janitorial costs for the police station, and how that would impact the budget for fiscal year '23 and ongoing costs, because just looking at the, the total that was for September through November, billed in January, remains to be paid now, the, I think, $47,000 that was listed as actual in the fiscal year '22 budget, and the $126,000 budgeted for this year, sort of how that all adds up?
Yeah, certainly, it's going to have an impact, because it's significant. Unfortunately, what happened, as you all know, the police station moved mid-year last year, what historically had been taken care of and covered in terms of janitorial services when they were here, fell within the DPW budget. When they transitioned over there, there was a need to hire a new company, and there was some miscommunication and mix-up establishing that with the police department. So, we've talked with Captain Rousseau, who manages the budget over there, and Chief Alashar. They're comfortable that they can absorb this within their budget this year. It's something we're going to need to continue to monitor, but as you know, they're one of the larger budgets in the city, aside from probably the schools and maybe DPW, fire, or probably comparable. So, they do, of all the departments, have probably more ability than, say, the Finance Department or the Clerks Department to absorb something like this. So, we'll just need to keep monitoring it as we go forward.
Counsel Bowen.
Thank you. If I could just follow up, so, just trying to understand the actual costs, the costs from last year seem to include the $47,000 that we saw during budget season, plus this $30 some odd thousand.
So, this-
But I guess my, my question is, how are we projecting those costs, and how are we accounting for last year's costs? Because it seems like it's either a $10,000 a month contract or a $13,000 a month contract, and it's unclear to me what our total was for September through June, and what our total is anticipated for July through June, at one or the other of those levels.
Well, so you can see through this invoice that it's $13,000 a month is what went unpaid by June 30th, which forces us to come before the council and ask to basically use the appropriation that was put in place on July 1 to pay these invoices. So, we can expect similar monthly charges to go forward for the rest of this fiscal year. $13,000 a month, that's the contract we're in right now. Does that answer your question?
It does, to some extent, but the amount we approved for the budget for this year is $126,000, which would be a little over $10,000 a month.
Right, right. So, I know-
And now there would be the additional-
Correct. So, it's not going to be sufficient to cover everything, so we're going to need to monitor that as we go through the fiscal year, and if there's a need, which there likely will be, they'll be able to look to other areas of their budget to potentially supplement. If not, we would be coming back before the council to shift some money around at a later date.
Okay. I think those are all of my questions on it.
Thank you, Counsel Bowen. Thank you, Mr. Ailes.
Sure.
The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, so, for legal affairs, we have Order number 189, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter regarding CPC funding recommendations for out-of-cycle application requests for additional CPA funds for Beverly Village for Living in the Arts at 7 Sawyer Road. Have considered said matter and recommend the council approve the request.
Ricky's using herself, yeah.
Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Get your steps going.
Yeah, getting my steps. Thank you, Counsel Rotendo.
Order number 201, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter regarding a reappointment of Mr. David Brewster to represent Ward 1 on the Open Space and Recreation Committee. Have considered said matter and recommend the council approve the reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries eight zero.
Order number 212, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter regarding reappointment for Mr. James Passanisi to serve as Ward 4, Representative on the Open Space and Recreation Committee. Have considered said matter and recommend the council approve the reappointment.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries eight zero. Thank you, Mr. DeFranza, for being here with us this evening.
Lovely to see you all.
Lovely to see you, and see without your boot on is very exciting.
Order number 213, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter regarding appointments to the N192 Citizen Advisory Committee. Have considered said matter and recommend the council approve the appointments.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, for Public Services, we have Order 202, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding a petition from National Grid Plan 29756006, Pond Street for Grant of Location. Have considered said matter and recommend the public hearing be held on September 12th at 7:30 p.m.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order to set that public hearing for September 12th at 7:30 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries eight zero.
Order number 203, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding a petition from National Grid for Pond Street to excavate the public ways and run and maintain underground electric conduits. Have considered said matter and recommend the public hearing be held September 12th at 7:40 p.m.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order to set that public hearing September 12th, 7:40 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries eight zero.
Order number 204, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding a petition from National Grid for Grant of Location at Chapman Street. Have considered said matter and recommend the public hearing be held on September 12th at 7:45 p.m.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order to set that public hearing September 12th, 7:45 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries eight zero.
Order number 205, the Committee on Public Services, to whom was referred the matter regarding a petition from National Grid to install underground electric conduits on Weber Street. Have considered said matter and recommend the public hearing be held on September 12th at 7:50 p.m.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order to set that public hearing September 12th, 7:50 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries eight zero. That's it. Thank you very much, everyone. Are there any last announcements or comments besides the reminder that I have that we have our first regular city council meeting of September on the 12th, and we do have those four public hearings that we just sat? We'll have another meeting on the 19th, and the reason that they appeared off their usual pattern is because of the state primary election, which is the first week of September, and so our clerk's office will be working hard on that, and so we will be meeting the 12th and the 19th, and then we do have that special meeting on the 27th at 7:00 p.m. that we just talked about to take up the charter. Ms. Dixon.
Can I say, early voting in person starts on Saturday, August 28. I don't, I hope that's the right date for that Saturday. I believe it's the 28th of the last Saturday in August. Starts Saturday and goes through the following Friday before Labor Day weekend. 27th, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dixon. That's an important reminder for anybody who's voting. And the dates are on the, dates are on the website. Thank you. And I, I will just share an announcement that she's probably too modest to share herself, but our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Dixon, recently had her NEMC graduation, which is a big milestone for municipal clerks and assistant clerks. So, congratulations, Ms. Dixon. Counselors, any other announcements, updates? All right, well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Kim, in the booth.